Calling this meeting to order and welcome to our annual confrontation with reality. Okay, honorable members of City Council, in accordance with the Virginia Beach City Code two dash twenty-one and by authority invested me as the mayor of the city of Virginia Beach, I hereby call for a special formal session of the Virginia Beach City Council Tuesday, November twenty-six, 2024, twelve thirty PM, Building Nineteen Municipal Complex, Twenty Sixteen Courthouse Drive. The purpose of the special session is to allow the City Council Board joint workshop for the five-year forecast. Welcome, everybody. Councilman Taylor is unavailable to be with us today, but we welcome our friends and with the school board. Thank you for all being here. Thank you. Yep, yes.
Mr. Adam, Chair of the School Board, Chair of the School Board, do you have anything?
No, just I look forward to this every year, and I thank you for including us in your presentation of the five-year forecast. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, School Chair, City Council, and Board members. My name's Kevin Chadelier, and so I'm Director of Budget for the City of Virginia Beach. And so we're going to be providing the five-year forecast today, basically presentation by committee. So first is going to be Nikki Johnson, or I'm sorry, let me step back a little bit. I got a little ahead of myself. So I added this slide last minute as there's several members that were recently elected that are not currently on sworn ends, and they're in attendance today. So I just wanted to kind of provide this one high-level overview of the annual purpose of the five-year forecast. So it's an opportunity each year for the City Council and the School Board to get together and really have a dialogue and a conversation related to any policy decisions that might be upcoming and driving future year resource allocation needs, as well as a first look in terms of projected revenues, early estimate of the revenues, and the financial forecast for both the city and the school operational needs. And so with that being said, I'm now going to ask for Nikki Johnson to come up. Each year is a part of this. It's not just a financial forecast look, but we also work to incorporate an economic outlook or overview of the regional economy. We've worked with HRPDC over the last several years, and historically Greg Grutendorf attended, and he would give this portion of the presentation. He has taken on a different role within the organization, and so he has passed the reins to Nikki Johnston, the Regional Economist with HRPDC, who's going to be coming up and giving this overview of the economic outlook for the Hampton Roads region. She's going to be covering this with several slides in the presentation. However, I should note that the document that was provided to City Council and the School Board has more narrative within it, and we work with HRPDC to incorporate their thoughts and narrative to go along with the slides. So certainly more detail in there, but Nikki's going to come up and provide a presentation of that information to the boards.
Welcome.
Thank you. Okay. Good afternoon. Thank you all for having me here today to discuss the state of the Hampton Roads economy. Now, before we look at the latest trends, both in the region and in the city of Virginia Beach, I first want to just take a step back and look at the national context, because it's really important to point out the incredible resilience of the national economy over the past few years. Now, if we remember back just last year, majority of economists were actually predicting a recession, and that did not happen. Not only did it not happen, in 2023, on an annual basis, inflation-adjusted GDP rose at a faster rate both in the previous year and compared to 2019 levels. So we've done remarkably well. Now, if we look at the quarterly data here, which is through Q3 2024, we have seen a slight slowdown in quarterly GDP growth over the past year. However, we're still well above that historical average of about 2.1% per quarter. And so what we're seeing is the slowdown is signaling more of a normalization to pre-pandemic levels, right? We're slowing from that accelerated pace that we'd seen over the prior few years to now more towards pre-pandemic trends. Inflation has also made some significant improvements. It's continuing to move in the right direction. We know that in the summer of 2022, at the peak, year-over-year prices were up 9%. So in the last couple of years, we've made significant strides. This is as of October 2024. We see the latest inflation rate was 2.6%. So we've made significant improvements, but we're still above the Federal Reserve's target rate of 2%. So we still have some movement to make downwards. And if we think about how inflation is measured, if we exclude that food and energy, which are more volatile prices, and that core inflation, which is what that represents, is that light blue line, we're still above 3%. If you think about how inflation is measured, housing actually accounts for more than a third of the goods and services that are used to measure our Consumer Price Index, which is the main measure of monthly inflation. And so, as I'll talk about later, the stubbornly high prices are something that's driving these trends. Turning to Hampton Roads, the civilian jobs in the region made a full recovery by early 2023. However, over the past year, monthly job growth has slowed some from that accelerated pace that we saw over the prior few years. But we're still above that historical average of monthly job growth. So once again, a slowdown, but more of a stabilization to pre-pandemic trends rather than any indication of a real downturn. Historically, job growth in Hampton Roads has lagged both the nation and the state. That was true in the decade prior to the pandemic, due in part to the twin impacts of the Great Recession and federal budget sequestration of 2013, that really slowed growth in the region as the rest of the country was recovering. But we see here that that slower growth in the region also is occurring since the pandemic started. So if we compare the total number of jobs from the month before the pandemic in February 2020 to the latest estimates for October 2024, you can see in the region, jobs are up 3.3%, slightly below the 4% growth for Virginia and the 4.4% growth for the nation. We know that industry mix has a lot to do with this, and if we look at the industry breakdown of job growth, so this is comparing pre-pandemic October 2019 to the latest estimates for 2024, should be no surprise that COVID is still continuing to shape industry trends within the region. We see that the largest gains have been in service sectors, such as construction, business services, professional business services, and healthcare and social assistance. Now, the industry sectors that have not made a recovery yet are also those that were most affected in the immediate impact of the pandemic. So we see that retail trade is at least to recover, still 4,200 jobs below those 2019 levels. State and local government jobs have also yet to recover. Now, leisure and hospitality, because these are monthly numbers, there is a lot of noise. If you actually look in your economic overview report, in the previous month's numbers for September, we were slightly above those pre-pandemic levels. But now in October, we're slightly below. It's just because we're on that margin. If you look at the annual gains in leisure hospitality jobs in 2023, that marked our first year of a full recovery, and that also put us on track with the nation and what we saw in national trends for leisure and hospitality. And so even though you see a slight decline here, I would also expect for 2024 on an annual basis that leisure hospitality jobs should be slightly above those pre-pandemic levels, if trends continue throughout the rest of the year. So civilian labor force and employment in the region made a full recovery by early 2022. But as we saw with job growth trends, we also see a slowdown in growth over the last year. And we see a very similar trend in Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach also made a full recovery in its level of civilian labor force and employment by early 2023. And then, similar to the region and the nation, we have seen a slowdown in monthly gains over the past 12 months. Once again, those growth rates compared to the historical trends are still right at or slightly above the historical average. And so still signaling that downturn to the pre-pandemic trends rather than an impending actual recession or any type of labor market downturn. We're still looking strong. But that historically tight labor market that we've experienced over the past few years is definitely cooling. And so as a result, we are seeing a slight uptick in the latest unemployment rates. And that's true both for the nation, the region, and the city of Virginia Beach. So you can see in the nation, the unemployment rate is much higher than here in the region, which has also been true historically. It's at about 4.1%. In Virginia Beach, we're below 3% unemployment rate, which is also right near pre-pandemic levels, right? But the uptick is still near those pre-pandemic levels, so overall, we're still seeing a strong labor market, similar to what we see with economic activity. Growth remains strong, slowdown from the accelerated pace of the prior few years, but of course, there's a lot of uncertainty remaining moving forward. So how this trend continues throughout the next year, we're not as confident about, but we do believe that these trends should continue without any big jumps, all else equal. Turning to the housing market. So home sales in 2023 fell dramatically. We know that that also tracked with the historic rise in mortgage rates. Mortgage rates peaked in October of 2023 at about 7.6%, right? They have come down about a percentage point since then, and that also does have an impact on what we've seen in home sales over the past year. So home sales did continue to decline in 2024, but the pace has been much slower than the prior two years. However, if we look historically, the number of homes sold in the region is not just below those pre-pandemic levels, it's the lowest levels we've seen in more than a decade. And we see similar trends for the city of Virginia Beach. So this is the number of residential units sold, but we see the same trend after that historic surge during the pandemic, with the rise in mortgage rates and slowdown in sales dropped dramatically by more than half nearly. Now, the pace of the decline, this is year-to-date as of October 2024, the number of residential units sold did decline so far, but the pace of the decline is significantly slower than the previous two years. Now, home prices, despite this significant decline in home sales, home prices have remained stubbornly high. And so what we see here, this is comparing home price growth, a typical value of a home, in the decade prior to the pandemic, so between quarter one 2010 and quarter one 2020, home prices in the region are up 7.5% compared to 19% in Virginia and 36.3% in the U.S. So that was over a 10-year period. In the following two years, you can see the surge in home prices. By early 2023, we're at 50%. Home prices had increased 50% from that 2010 value. Now, we did see in 2023, as mortgage rates declined, home prices, home sales slowed slightly, we saw a slight decline in home price growth. But the latest estimates for the first half of 2024 show us that home price growth has accelerated again. And so we still have some ways to move. And if we look at the median sales price of an existing home in Virginia Beach, we see the same trend. Sales prices surged in the aftermath of the pandemic. Year-to-date, the median sales price of an existing home is about 378,000. That increase year-to-date for 2024 is slightly below the growth that we saw in the previous few years, but we're still increasing. And it's a really interesting dichotomy that home sales have increased so dramatically, yet home prices have continued to remain stubbornly high. And to understand why, you just need to look at supply. So this is the month's supply of housing inventory for the region. And so what this is measuring is the amount of months that it would take to sell off all of the existing inventory of homes available at the current pace of sales. At the lowest level during the surge in home sales during the pandemic, it fell to a historic low of one month. It means it would take just one month to sell off all the existing housing inventory within the region. Now, we have made some recovery to that. If you can see, the latest estimates for October of this year are about 2.2, but we're still well below those pre-pandemic levels. And so in order for home prices to ease, we have to increase supply significantly to ease that downward pressure. And that's all I have for you. If you have any questions, please reach out and email me or let me know.
Questions? At all?
No, but thank you. That's very insightful, and it really paints a picture for us to work on. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you.
All right. So Nikki did a great job covering the economic overview, and so I figured the remainder portion of the presentation will jump into the impacts on Virginia Beach in terms of estimated revenues, assumed expenditures over the forecast period. So first, jumping into revenues. So the building of any budget is pretty much predicated by starting by looking at your estimated revenue growth over time. So the assumptions that went into the development of the five-year forecast is that, as always, it's assumed that all existing tax rates and policies remain in place as established by the City Council. Estimated growth in these revenue sources, whenever you see the graphs, it's based on historical growth trends and organic growth or natural growth that's occurred over time that's projected to either continue or to increase or decline over the forecasted period. So it does not take into account any adjustments in tax rates. And also, last but not least, as the cities, as city and schools both have a revenue sharing formula in which several of the key revenues that I'm going to be covering today are shared jointly by both city and schools, the revenue sharing formula is assumed to be extended and remain as is currently drafted for the duration of the forecast period. So first, looking at real estate. This is our largest local revenue source and most significant in terms of what we use to balance the annual operating budget and share with schools. So you can see, this is nearly an $800 million revenue source. And if I could just take a second, because all the graphs are going to be the same going through and familiarize everybody with the visual here. So there's three data points on each of these revenue charts or graphs. The blue line indicates the annual budgeted amount for each of the fiscal years in the forecast period. The blue line indicates the actual revenue received for that fiscal year. So you can see that on this graph, FY19 through FY24, that's plotted across there because that's the most recent year that we finished. And then going forward from FY25, the current fiscal year beyond, that the forecast period and projection is reflected in that yellow line. So again, looking at real estate, whenever I say it's the most important or most important revenue source for the city of Virginia Beach, it's not just unique that it's important in Virginia Beach, but it's all localities across the Commonwealth. It's a primary funding source for all local governments. And so the city, city staff works closely with the real estate assessor to look at this and project this revenue estimate over time. You can see that this is projected to grow from FY25 to FY26. The real estate assessor's assuming, as preliminary, is assuming that assessment growth is going to be 4.5% for FY26. The budgeted growth here reflects a growth of only 3.9%. And for the general fund specifically, it's about $27 million budget-to-budget growth that's shared with schools via the school funding formula. So why the difference between the 4.5% assessment growth and the 3.9% budgeted revenue growth? Well, there's some programs that are in place, like the state mandated Veterans Tax Relief Program, that's growing about 25% annually in terms of enrollment within the program. The projected cost of that program in FY26 is $35 million. So whenever that's netted out of the revenues, it allows the city to rely on less revenue and year-to-year budgeted growth. So for context, and I've got a visual, but I didn't want to bore everybody with the graphic, if this mandated, unfunded mandate continues and this exemption continues based on the current growth pattern, about 25% a year, that $35 million will be 90-something million dollars by the end of the forecasted period. So something we're very mindful of in taking consideration in the building of the current budget and future budgets. So again, Nikki had talked about the importance of housing and the impact that the housing's having on the Hampton Roads locale or region. Virginia Beach is certainly not any different. And in fact, something that's not plotted on here is the City Council's consideration of hearing the public in the establishment of the tax rate over time. So in FY22 and FY23, through absorbing the bond referendum and not adjusting the tax rate, and again, in the most recently adopted operating budget, City Council reduced the tax rate to the current tax rate of 97 cents per $100 assessed value. Looking at personal property, so this is by far the most complicated revenue source to project over the forecast period. It does indicate that this revenue is projected to grow over the forecast period, but there's a lot of reasons for the conservative nature in which we estimate this revenue. So you can see in FY25, the budget amounts $206 million, and we're anticipating this to grow to $220 million in FY26. So part of the reason for the conservative nature is one of the primary drivers of this revenue source, which is vehicle assessed values, has been in fluctuation over the last several years as a result of the pandemic and chip shortages. Everybody's been aware of what's going on in the used car market value, where actually used vehicles are appreciating in value instead of naturally depreciating over time. So considering the vehicles are in used vehicle values are a big component of this revenue source, we were kind of hesitant and not understanding if that, how fast that fall off or that normalizing of the market might, what might occur in the current year. Based on conversation with the Commissioner of Revenues Office, it doesn't appear that it's depreciating at quite the level that we were anticipating. So we're optimistic in this revenue source going forward in this early estimate of FY26 revenues being 220 million. Also, something else I wanted to note with personal property is there's a lot of different components that go into this revenue projection. So personal property is, for starters, 90% of it is due in the month of June. So if you think about it, we won't even know how we're doing and performing in the current fiscal year that we're in, really until after the budget's adopted this fiscal year, establishing it for next fiscal year. So we're really trying to look two years into the future. And then I spoke about vehicle values as being a component of this, but there's really more tax categories within this. So for example, the tax rate for vehicles, motorcycles, and trailers is $4 per 100 assessed values. But recreational vehicles have a different tax rate of $1.50 per 100 assessed. And then there's other categories such as mobile homes. They get taxed at the real estate tax rate of 97 cents per 100. And then there's computers for data centers, which is taxed at 40 cents per 100 assessed value. And then there's also other categories that are taxed at a millionth of a cent, such as the boats, machinery, and tools. And then City Council's used this as a means in the past as an allowance to provide tax relief in modifying this tax rate for certain businesses. So for example, a millionth of a cent is the business personal property tax rate for businesses that are new to Virginia Beach and for the first two years of their operation. So again, it's another important revenue source for the city of Virginia Beach. We are a little bit more optimistic in our growth with close to 7% in FY26 budget-to-budget with a 3% projected in the out years of the forecast period. Business professional occupational license, our B-Pole often also mentioned or discussed as the business license tax. So this is a tax applied to the gross receipts of businesses for a calendar year basis. So January 1 to December 31st of any year. Something that's a little challenging with this one also, similar to personal property, which is also a calendar year tax, we don't really know or aren't able to track throughout the year how this one's performing on a month-to-month basis. The bulk of this revenue really comes in the month of March, which is after the city manager's proposed budget's been released. So there's an opportunity after the proposed budget's out to look at this and get a little bit of a true-up headed into the reconciliation process. So as you can see by the trend line on this, budget to actuals have varied over the last several years. So actuals have actually overperformed budget slightly in each of the years. We feel like we're actually able to catch up with this now, and we feel confident in our FY26 budget estimate of about $67 million in this revenue source. So for a little context as to that variation in the last several years, the City Council, through discussion with the Commissioner of Revenues Office, modified the thresholds in which B-Pole taxes are applied, and that occurred mid-year in FY24. And so with that implication, it was a little difficult to get an assessment of how that was going to materialize, considering it was going into place prior to the revenue actually being realized. But we feel like working with the Commissioner of Revenues Office, we got a good handle on this now, and we're back on track to where we were in the pre-pandemic estimate of this revenue. And as you can see, we were fairly close year to year. General sales tax, looking at this tax revenue source over this time period, you can see there was quite a bit of fluctuation, largely driven by uncertainties of the pandemic. So general sales tax is a 6% tax on the sale of goods within the Commonwealth, or more specifically Hampton Roads region. So there's a little bit of nuance with that. So of the 6% sales tax, 4.3% of that is a state tax that the state collects and retains for the state's operations. 0.7% of that tax rate is a regional tax collected by the state and utilized for transportation initiatives within the Hampton Roads region. The remaining 1% is the local option, and that's the amount that's remitted back to the city of Virginia Beach, which has been shared with schools through the revenue sharing formula, and that's what this graph here is. So pre-pandemic, we saw consistent growth of this revenue source, about 3% per year. During the pandemic timeframe, you can see that the actuals grew quite a bit more than what was anticipated. So some law changes occurred during that timeframe, and just right about the point in time that everybody was told to go home, and everybody started relying on delivery services and online purchases, a law went into effect that required businesses or the sales of goods that occurred online had to collect and remit a sales tax applicable to that locality. So it's kind of one of those things we couldn't foresee going into the pandemic and estimate, but luckily, it did occur. The timing of that was right, and it really helped the city and schools in maintaining critical services during that timeframe. You can see in FY24, we got back on track with this revenue source. We feel confident in our current year revenue estimate, budget being balanced at $93 million, and assume a 3% growth in FY26 to put this revenue close to $98 million, and we anticipate that to continue throughout the forecast period. Cigarette tax, the graphic of this one I wanted to include on here, although this isn't a formula-driven revenue, it's certainly one that is worth noting based on declining trend. So you can see each year, cigarette tax continues to decline. Historically, this was declining at a rate of about 2% per year. However, since 2019, this has been declining at a rate of about 8% per year. So worth noting on this is that the city's tax rate is 75 cents per pack of cigarettes sold. Basically, that's a stamp tax. So it's applicable to tobacco products. So a lot's changed in recent times. So in 2019, the Commonwealth changed the smoking age from 18 to 21 years old. So that further resulted in declining of the revenue source. Something else that occurred the following year in FY2020 was the state froze locality's ability to modify their tax rate. So they were capped at their current tax rate that they had in place at that point in time and could not increase it beyond that. So the city of Virginia Beach is capped until the state changes that law at 75 cents per pack. pack. But also, something else that's occurred is we're all familiar with vaping products. So likely contributing to the further leakage of this revenue source is our individuals switching from tobacco products to other nicotine products, which this tax does not apply to. The states recently put laws in place that they collect a tax and they have a tax collection process for vaping products, but that opportunity has not been extended to localities as of date. And so likely we'll continue to see this revenue source continue to decline in the future years of the forecast. And we estimate this to be about $6 million in FY '26 and continue a 3% decline through the forecast period. Restaurant meals tax. So this tax rate's a 5.5% tax rate based on prepared food goods. So whether it's at a restaurant or if you go into a grocery store and purchase a hot cooked pizza item, the meals tax is applied to that to that purchase. So this revenue, prior to the pandemic, we typically refer to as recession-proof or very resilient as the two recessions prior to this. This revenue growth still this revenue still to continue to produce year over year. You can see there's a little bit of volatility. However, meals tax rebounded quicker than we were anticipating. We're fairly close in our estimate of this revenue at the conclusion of last year's operating budget, and so we feel confident with our current established estimate of $96.5 million. We're assuming a continued growth of this with FY '26 estimate being $99.4 million with an assumed 3% growth in the out years of the forecast period. Looking at hotel tax. So again, this follows the same pattern as the restaurant meals tax. In the pandemic years, really, there was a lot of uncertainty with this. However, one of the surprises to our department and the city was the quick rebounding of the hotel tax revenue during the pandemic coming out of the pandemic. So you can see that from FY '21 to FY '23, this revenue grew by close to $20 million. So part of that is a couple of reasons. So there was a lot of pent-up demand during the pandemic with individuals not being able to travel. So when the city of Virginia Beach opened up as one of the first few destinations, we were the benefic we were the benefactors of that, and we became one of the most traveled to markets and hottest hotel markets within the within the nation. So in addition to that, there was also a state code change that contributed to this revenue growth. So prior to 2020, if an individual went to a third-party booking site and they booked a hotel room, well, they paid for the hotel room, but there was no requirement that that booking agency collect the occupancy transient tax or the hotel tax of 8% and remit that to the city. But instead, they weren't required to do that. Well, the state code changed, and they became required to do that. So we began realizing that revenue over the last several years, and so that also had a contributing factor into the city realizing more hotel tax revenue. So we're anticipating this revenue growth to remain relatively flat, which is in line with some of the what we're hearing from the hotel industry, CVB, state of the region with tourism, is that it's not that the tourism industry is doing bad, it's just not growing at the same level that it was coming out of the pandemic in that timeframe. So at this point in time of the budget process, we're anticipating hotel tax revenue to remain relatively flat with a lower assumed growth rate over the forecast period, more in line with the historical averages of about 2%. The telecom tax, I'm sorry. So the telecom tax is a 5% tax collected by the state on communication services, and then it's remitted to each locality. So in the past, the state took this used to be a locally administered tax, and the state took this over sometime around 2006. So since that time, we've been seeing steady annual declines in this revenue, as you can see in this graph here. Historically, the declining annual revenue is about 5% per year. We feel like we're in line and following this trend line as last year's actuals to revenue or actuals to budget came pretty much right in line, and we pegged that one. And we anticipate this to continue going forward, and we're assuming that 5% decline throughout the forecasted period. So what could be the reasoning and the driving factor behind this decline? So there's a lot that goes into it. One of the things are the goods and services that this tax is applied to. So this tax is applied to landline services, satellite TV, voice-over-phone services, and there's just been a lot of change in technology. And I've said this in the past, so as people come to realize the streaming services offer the same services as their typical cable offerings in the past, they're eliminating their cable services relying on the streaming services, which is not subject to this tax. So that's just one contributing factor, but it's something that we continue to see declines in annually. Before switching over to expenditures, there's also just one thing I want to say is, over time, you'll see that the budget actuals of these various revenues are overperform or underperform on any given year. But in the collective, we have a very good track record of reliably predicting and estimating these revenues. Historically, the revenues that we're talking about here and within the general fund are within a half of a percent of budget to actuals at the end of the year. So we feel good. And so like Nikki was showing all those previous graphs on the pandemic errors, I'm so glad to be moving that in the past and getting back to a predictable, reliable projection going forward. Switching to baseline or expenditures. So several assumptions were made in the development of the city's general fund operating budget expenditures over the forecast period. First components to talk about and navigate through are the personnel projections. So in terms of compensation, each year of the forecasted period is assumed to for personnel to grow at 3% annually, which is in line with the STEP program recently implemented by city council two years ago. Another thing that we're mindful of that we fluctuate and adjust for accordingly throughout the forecast period are changes in the VRS rate. So the city and schools both are a part of the Virginia retirement system. So it's a state-managed pension system with the rates for each locality. In the case of the city and the schools, the VRS board establishes different rates based on long-term actuarial and needs to meet each locality's obligation for the retirement pension needs. So that's a rate that is adjusted every two years. So what we've done in the development of the forecast is we've assumed a 1.5% increase to that rate every other year of the forecasted period. Looking at health insurance. The employer's contribution of health insurance is assumed to grow 3% annually each year of the forecasted period. And we always make note of this because in looking at personnel, one of the things that has come up in the past is discussion of vacancies. And so just noting, this does not take into account the baseline projections, does not take into account vacancy savings or attrition savings. That's something that's typically looked at year-to-year in the budget development process and can be used as a budget balancing tool, but that's not assumed in the development of this. The projection is just a straight-line projection based on revenue, based on growth trends that we're seeing, and a straight-line projection of personnel, but not a budget balancing exercise each year of the forecast period. And looking at operating accounts, a baseline level of 3% is assumed for inflation for each year of the forecasted period. This is in line with the Federal Reserve and the the long-term projection of inflation. So it's also in line with the Fed's monetary policy, which they have a target goal of 2%, which they see as healthy. And so it's just a little bit above that is what we're estimating at 3% each year of the forecasted period. And then we could, we've made adjustments for known increases. So for example, IT, the city has a Microsoft licensed subscription, which every department, every staff member uses day-to-day as part of their operating their operating system on their computer. Well, we know that that's a fixed increase that's going to go up, and that's being driven by the negotiations with Microsoft. So we've tried to make those adjustments where we could in the operating accounts within the forecasted period. And then last but not least, I just wanted to make note about debt service being held flat throughout the forecasted period. And so I'm going to skip over that because at the conclusion, after Crystal briefs, I'm going to come back up and have a little deeper dive and a little bit further discussion on the CIP means of financing and the impact of debt service over the forecast period. So whenever you take the projected revenues and baseline expenditures based on all those assumptions, then you develop the baseline five-year forecast projection, which is reflected, the numbers are reflected in the table at the bottom of this slide. So you can see that in FY '26 or 2025-26, the city's general fund's projecting a deficit of just over $7 million. And then that deficit is anticipated to grow each year of the forecasted period. It's also important to note that that's a compounding impact. I previously noted that we would not make an adjustment and try to balance any one year of it. So for context, whenever the city manager's budget comes out in March, it'll be a sustainably balanced budget that'll erase that deficit in year one of the forecast period, which then has a ripple-through effect. And so year two will be less by that amount. So I just wanted to give context of that, just in case anybody seeing these for the first time thinks, oh, my gosh, 30.8 million, how are we ever going to do it? It's certainly something we're mindful of, but I've been doing this presentation in the past and seen much worse. So something else I just wanted to kind of caveat before moving off of this slide is the top of this graph is showing, getting away from the numbers, but showing the year-to-year change in expenditures and revenues as a year-to-year percentage change. And so what you can see with this is the blue line represents the expenditures. And so we're anticipating a 3.9% growth in expenditures comparing current year's adopted budget to next year's FY '26 baseline budget. And we're anticipating revenue growth about 3.4%. So you can see that the expenditures are slightly outpacing revenues throughout the forecast period. But the real thing I want to make note of is the you can see that the revenue line, year-to-year growth, it's really shy of 3%. So it's just over 2%. And so just want to note, we've said this in the past, the double-digit growth year-to-year that we were seeing coming out of the pandemic was not the norm, and it wasn't going to be a continuation going forward. But it appears that we're getting back in line with the pre-pandemic level of revenue growth, which is closer to 2% to 3% annually. Also, I just wanted to make note that that was the baseline forecast. However, there are several unknowns at this point in time in the development of the budget, which we received previous direction from council to explore what opportunities and what afford what will we have the means to affordably sustain and implement several initiatives on an ongoing basis. So the first one being, it's still underway, but the city's conducting at the direction of council, another market salary survey. So the point in time that the last results were provided, it was basically on stale data. The great resignation happened just as we were receiving our the results of the market salary survey, and then everybody else conducted the exercise, and then they realigned themselves to the market. So the thought is that the city could potentially be out of kilter on its pay scales, again, with where the market actually lies. And so the study's currently being conducted and underway. The amount of that to implement is still yet to be determined, but that's a significant to-be-determined amount that could have a financial impact on the city. Not should, would, if it turns out that we're out of kilter. So some other direction from the city council was look for a way to potentially consider providing another 30 firefighters in the development of the FY '26 operating budget. So city council increased the fire department's operational staff by 30 FTEs in the current fiscal year and identified a need to continue to explore and look for adding another 30 firefighters next year in the development of the budget. Estimated cost of that's about $3.1 million. Another annualized cost will to be identified will be the cost for enhanced public safety screenings. Estimated annual cost of that's about $1.1 million. And then city council also gave direction to look for an ongoing sustainable way of providing and expanding the Parks After Dark program. They established the programs based on the use of one-time funding or expanded it based on the use of one-time funding in the current fiscal year. And they gave direction for city manager and development of budget to look for a sustainable way of supporting this in years to come. So again, these are not taken into account in the baseline forecast. So you know, if you were to add them up and lay it over top of the projected deficit, it's only going to work in the making the deficit greater over the forecast period. But again, it's early in the budget process, and there's a lot of discussion to be had in development of the budget. So with that, in the city's operating budget, five-year forecast being discussed, Crystal's going to come up and talk about the school's operational forecast for the next five years. And then I'm going to come back up, I think after Dr. Robertson says a few words, to have a few more slides and discussion about CIP or Capital Improvement Program Means
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present the school system's financial five-year forecast. In this portion of the presentation, I will outline aspects of the school operating budget, including student enrollment projections, revenue and expenditure assumptions, and potential factors that could impact this budget forecast. We hope this forecast serves as a platform for future discussion and consideration of alternative approaches. There is further detail in the document on topics like our focus on developing our new Compass to 2030 strategic framework, learning today, leading tomorrow, programmatic priorities and major initiatives, school safety and technology infrastructure. So we see this forecast as a strategic financial planning tool focused on sustainability and does not include proposed balancing solutions or revised service levels. Instead, it's a planning resource highlighting opportunities and challenges over time. Specific budget balancing measures will be introduced as future budgets are developed. Naturally, projections become less certain as we look further ahead, influenced by variables like state, federal, and local budgets, compensation trends, inflation, state or federal mandates, grant matches, and new school board priorities. This forecast is built upon the adopted fiscal year 2024-25 budget, historical data, and assumptions derived from various sources. These underlying assumptions are essential to the forecast. We gain additional insight into the state's budget when the governor updates the economic forecast and submits the state's proposed budget typically in mid-December. So you received this afternoon a good amount of economic information. We're just going to cover briefly some things that we pay more attention to and that we feel influences the budget planning over the coming years. So currently, the general assembly and the governor are likely to have ample funds to debate on the revised budget that the governor will propose next month, in part due to a projected $3.2 billion surplus in state revenue for this fiscal year and next. While there appears no recession is in sight, uncertainty exists over the future of the federal government workforce that underpins a third of Virginia's economy as the incoming president prepares to take office. The governor has indicated plans to advocate for tax cuts in the revised budget he will introduce in December, while the opposing party is expected to continue prioritizing additional investments in K-12 at schools, higher education, and healthcare. Additionally, there are indications that the governor may once again propose modernizing Virginia's sales tax to include certain services rather than limiting it to goods. So you may recall last year during the five-year forecast presentation, we referenced Virginia's Joint Legislative Audit and Review Commission, or the J-LAR report from July of 2023, which highlighted major shortcomings in the state schools' funding system. It found Virginia schools receive far less funding per K-12 students compared to national, regional, and neighboring state averages. This underfunding is linked to flaws in the Standards of Quality, or SOQ, formula, which underestimates staffing needs, salaries, and resources necessary to ensure a high-quality education for students as it fails to account for the workforce needed to meet educational standards accurately. Furthermore, the formula underestimates salaries and related compensation costs for most SOQ-recognized positions. This underfunding is a critical issue as it is far-reaching implications for the quality of education that students receive. Compounding these issues, Compounding these issues, the SOQ formula does not adequately account for students with high needs, including at-risk students, those in special education, and English learners. The state's funding allocations for these specific student populations fall significantly short of the funding levels established as necessary by comprehensive cost studies conducted in other states. This deficiency threatens the ability of Virginia schools to provide the essential resources and support required to ensure an equitable and inclusive education for all students. Some progress was made in the two thousand twenty-four budget, particularly in supporting students from low-income families. However, more effort is needed to address both near-term and long-term J-LARK recommendations. On October thirty-first, Virginia lawmakers discussed ways to address the state's decades-old funding formula and considered a series of near-term recommendations from J-LARK that could be phased into the Commonwealth's plans within three to four years. These include removing the support cap, which limits the number of support positions the state would fund, addressing technical issues with the funding formula, and using division averages instead of approximating what most school divisions spend on operating their schools in the state's calculations. J-LARK also recommended that the local composite index, or locality's ability to pay education costs, should be changed to a three-year average instead of every two, as well as suggesting changing the at-risk funding formula that would impact low-income or students identified as at-risk and studying special education staffing needs. Longer-term J-LARK recommendations, such as moving to a student-weighted funding model instead of using the current staff-based model, updating staffing ratios to more accurately reflect how school divisions are staffed, and updating salary assumptions during re-benchmarking are more complex and will require a more in-depth review. The joint subcommittee's work is, will be extensive, yet crucial to tie final report recommendations to viable revenue sources over the coming years. So moving on to our assumptions, this slide highlights the primary revenue assumptions for the forecast. Local contributions calculated through the local revenue sharing formula remain the largest revenue source for the school division. The Commonwealth of Virginia contributes the next-largest source of revenue, primarily through basic aid, categorical programs, incentive programs, lottery-funded programs, and sales tax revenues. Additional revenue comes from federal sources and other local funding sources. For the five-year projection, we made the following revenue assumptions. Projected annual increases in the local contribution year-over-year increases are projected at four point one percent for twenty-five, twenty-six, two point eight percent for twenty-six, twenty-seven, two point six percent for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and two point five percent for both twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and twenty-nine, thirty. State revenue figures from the Virginia Department of Education's Calc Tool will be updated once the governor's budget is released. Currently, we anticipate a six point three-two percent increase for twenty-five, twenty-six, followed by a moderate three percent annual increase for the remainder of the forecast period. Growth in sales tax revenue has plateaued. For fiscal year twenty-six, a slight increase of point nine percent is projected based on VDOE estimates, with smaller increases of point five percent in subsequent years. We are seeing sales tax revenue for the current year marginally exceeding that of last year. The primary federal revenue sources for school operating fund are federal impact aid and Medicaid reimbursements. Despite recent trends of exceeding budget projections in this category, we are forecasting flat revenues due to potential changes at the federal level. Other local revenue includes miscellaneous sources such as tuition, fees, facility rentals, sales of salvaged materials and capital assets, lost and stolen technology, and the Stop Arm program. While most streams are not expected to grow, revenue from the Stop Arm program has shown consistent increases since its inception. As a result, we are projecting an annual increase of seventy-five thousand dollars for this program. Enrollment is expected to decline each year throughout the forecast period. The long-term implications of this trend will depend on factors such as economic conditions and lasting effects of the pandemic. Although the average daily membership is decreasing, the number of English-language learners and students receiving special education services has steadily risen. The percentage of students affected by poverty saw an increase of nearly five percent in twenty-two, twenty-three compared to twenty-nineteen, twenty-twenty, and twenty-twenty, twenty-one, and over two percent in twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three compared to twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, stabilizing at this elevated level. These growing student needs place an additional strain on the operating budget as we continue efforts to address pandemic-related learning loss and social-emotional challenges. This slide outlines the key budget expenditure assumptions. Over the forecast period, expenditures are projected to grow at a faster pace than revenues due to factors such as compensation increases, rising healthcare costs, inflation, debt service, and the need for additional resources to support our evolving student population. This includes addressing the learning loss and social-emotional needs. Expenditure assumptions are as follows. For compensation, a three percent salary increase, including step increments for full-time personnel, is assumed throughout the forecast period. These increases are placeholders for future consideration by the school board as part of the annual budget process or not guaranteed. Employer health insurance rates are projected to rise by fifteen percent for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, with a five percent annual increase in subsequent years. We are collaborating with our third-party consultant to identify strategies to mitigate rising healthcare costs. A one percent increase in employer Virginia retirement system rates is expected, is projected for fiscal year two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven, and with another one percent increase anticipated for fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Non-personnel line items are expected to increase by three percent annually to account for inflation. Pago funding for our capital improvement program is expected to increase a million dollars annually over the forecast period to address escalating facility maintenance needs and reduce reliance on debt service. Monitoring pay-go funding will remain a priority, given the substantial maintenance demands of our aging facilities. With respect to workforce challenges, the nationwide teacher shortage continues to significantly challenge school divisions across the country, including Virginia Beach. Recruiting and retaining both educators and non-instructional staff remains difficult due to a shrinking teacher pool, non-competitive salaries, rising housing costs, and increased job market competition, factors that jeopardize educational quality. Despite a three point five percent salary increase for teachers, Virginia Beach's entry-level teacher salary dropped from fourth to seventh place among seven school divisions in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five. Neighboring divisions currently offer entry-level salaries two percent to eight point two percent higher than those in Virginia Beach, which understand, underscores the need for further adjustments. Non-instructional employees on the Unified Scale received an average increase of three percent, with the minimum hourly wage for allocated positions rising to fifteen dollars an hour as of July first, two thousand twenty-four, and increasing to fifteen dollars and thirty cents on August first, two thousand twenty-four, ahead of the state-mandated deadline of January two thousand twenty-six. The division is actively working with a consultant to finalize updates to the Unified Experience-Based Step Pay Scale and address the competitiveness of the entry rate for Instructional Experience-Based Step Pay Scale. Recommendations from this work will be considered for potential implementation in the two thousand five, two thousand six budget cycle. Based on the previously outlined revenue and expenditure assumptions, the school division is also projecting a deficit in the school operating fund for each year of the forecast period, as shown on this slide. And this next slide also illustrates the same data with revenue shown in green and expenditure shown in blue. Several factors unique to school divisions can drive educational costs to increase at a rate faster than inflation or available funding. This slide illustrates several of these factors that could impact future budgets. Each of these considerations is carefully evaluated as we work to align our budget with available funding and the priorities established by our school board and leadership. Recognizing these factors offers valuable context for understanding the financial challenges schools face today and the broader context considerations that inform budgeting decisions. I'll give you a moment to review this slide as I turn the presentation over to Dr. Robertson to conclude.
Welcome.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Pate. So good afternoon, city council and school board members. I'd like to conclude our portion of the presentation today by sharing how the plethora of programs offered by Virginia Beach City Public Schools to the students and families of Virginia Beach impact our annual budget. Our families in Virginia Beach City Public Schools have and will continue to demand the best possible learning experiences for their children. To do so requires that we continue to provide innovative programming that will spur student motivation and deepen learning. In turn, this will strengthen and expand a key pillar for the city of Virginia Beach, and that is attracting industry leaders and educated citizens. To accomplish this enormous task requires an understanding and awareness of these costs, which will then require greater financial commitment from those who will directly benefit. The programs captured here in total are unique to Virginia Beach City Public Schools. Other divisions may have a few of these types of programs, but no other divisions in the Commonwealth of Virginia can boast this array of student and family choice programs. Further, these are not required as program offerings by the Virginia Department of Education, which means they are not specifically considered in any state funding formula. If Virginia Beach City Public Schools chooses to eliminate any of these programs as a result of cuts to federal funding, or were needed to cover increased healthcare costs, as described by Ms. Pate on the previous slide, we would be within our right to make such decisions. However, please know we are not, and let me repeat, we are not, considering eliminating any of these programs that make Virginia Beach City Public Schools a world-class school division. Yet, it is imperative that decision-makers, like those seated in this room, know these are costs not specifically factored into any funding formula at the federal, state, or local levels. So in closing, we value and appreciate the partnership that exists between Virginia Beach City Public Schools and the city of Virginia Beach. It is fact, in fact, it is because of this partnership that Virginia Beach is a preferred location for families and businesses. And for this to continue will require a closer look at new plans to cover the costs of providing such abundance of outstanding programs. Thank you. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Kevin.
Thank you.
Okay, homestretch. All right, so, so now that city council and school board have had a discussion and presentation on the five-year forecast, the document's been provided for digestion and review, which is, again, has more detail and information in terms of line item projections for each of the city and schools. That'll be available whenever we put that on the website for the public to be able to read as well. But one of the things I was hoping to do is spend this last section of the presentation talking about the CIP and the operating budget and the impact and the relationship between the two. We often talk about in our five-year forecast presentation and budget presentations, we talk about terms such as pay-go and debt financing and things of that nature. So I thought it'd be good to just do a high-level overview and perhaps walk through some of that terminology and what that means and what the timeline is and the impact of such items. So this slide here reflects a terminology cheat sheet, if you will. And anytime I'm trying to describe, explain this to the public, town hall meetings or anything of that nature, first thing I do is I try to establish an example, right? So in the example of walking through this to help those might be watching online or not familiar with this, think of this like a home budget, right? So if you have, it's April, and your HVAC unit went out your house, right? So that's the scenario. So let's look at these, walk down the slide and reflect back on that and how, what you might do to fund that need within your household budget. So again, the concept is it's April, HVAC unit went out, but it's also tax return time. So you ended up just receiving your federal tax return that just so happens is the exact same amount as the HVAC repair cost. So in government, we would refer to that as pay-as-you-go, right? So we are going to take current year estimated revenue, and we're going to take that cash and directly pay for that good or service. So in your household budget, you deposit your tax return check, then you pay the HVAC technician, it's done. So another example is, if that's not the case, perhaps in your household budget to pay for that, you have to dip into your savings account, right? So you were saving for a rainy day, and you've been saving, and you need to utilize your savings account to pay for this. So in the operating budget and CIP, we refer to that as the fund balance, the use of fund balance, or previous retained earnings, or underutilized resources in previous years as a one-time means of financing to pay for that repair project. Or in your household budget, if you don't have either of those options, you might have to rely on the use of credit card or debt, right? Or a home equity line of credit to pay for that, for that repair of your house. So in the CIP and the operating budget, we'll talk about those as being bonds or debt as used as an instrument of financing a capital improvement project. So within bonds, in this category down here, there's a couple of other key terms and categories of bonds. There's the charter bonds, which is established by our city charter, is how much we're allowed to authorize and legally appropriate each year of the, as part of the annual operating budget. It's also important to note that those are backed by the full faith and credit of the city. And the people who are buying those, the bondholders typically see those as being less risky. And they are included in our city-school combined, city overall debt metric calculations. And I'll get into a little bit of those in just a minute. Another category you might hear discussed is public facility revenue bonds. So these are revenue-backed bonds. So for the city, a good example of this will be any bonds that we program for tourism, investment program-related projects are going to be debt-financed, PFRB bonds are the means of financing that project, meaning that we have an established, dedicated bill payer for that that is contingent on future revenues to come in from those dedicated sources. So again, it's subject to annual appropriation. And then some other, a little bit more in the weeds, but important terms that some people might hear that could see, seem overwhelming, whenever people talk about authorized. So what's it mean to have an authorized bond? Well, in terms of the annual operating budget, the legally appropriated source of funding and bonds are authorized as part of the annual budget to back a certain project or handful of projects. And then you'll also hear the term issued. So what is it issued? Sold, right? So if bonds are taken to the market and then sold, it's then sold to somebody who then gives the city the resources for an agreed-upon repayment schedule or for a set interest rate. So in other words, if you took out a home equity line, going back to the home example, your annual, the annual, or the monthly increase in your mortgage payment would be the equivalent of the debt service associated with that. So for those that are visual, this is my poor attempt at a visualization slide. My staff tried talking me out of it, and I wish they had now. So think of it as the operating budget being on the left side and the CIP on the right side. So we talk about these in the annual budget process, and both are standalone adopted documents, right? But they're very much related, and, and they have a relationship of back and forth. So if you think about the operating budget, that pay-as-you-go or that cash that gets sent over there is for projects to be appropriated, supporting key projects or appropriations to projects. And then within the CIP bonds that are programmed, the relationship and the impact that they then share with the operating budget is debt service. And that's going to be what the operating budget has to fund as part of its annual appropriation each year in the set amount of revenues. So for visualization of this in terms of how much the impact does this have on the operating budget, here's a slide that takes the FY twenty-five operating budget and puts it in a table. So you can see the budgeted amount going left to right. So for the city general fund and the schools, so for the city, nine hundred and fifty-two million dollars in estimated revenues. Then thinking about the impact of the CIP and the means of financing, you can think of it as the pay-go, or how much of that estimated revenue does the city directly send over to support the CIP? It was thirty-three point eight million dollars. And then how much did the CIP send back in terms of previously executed projects that have a debt service obligation that's impacting that year's estimated revenue at sixty-three point one million dollars roughly, and then so forth and so on. So just trying to give a visual of how that impacts the operating budget. What a lot of times people will do is they'll think bonds, and they'll flip to the CIP document, and then you'll see something such as this, which is just a reflection of GO or general obligation bonds, charter bonds, or PFRB bonds that are programmed each year. And some people will think that's the equivalent of the debt service payment, or that's what the issue- the issuance schedule is going to look like for that. It's not necessarily the case. So what this is, is just a reflection of the bonds that are to be appropriated in any given year to back projects in that year. So the, all they're really doing is establishing the appropriation for the execution to begin. And so the city doesn't typically forward-issue bonds, but instead reimburses ourselves. And that's not always the case, but historically that has been the case. And that is unusual and unique, but a enviable position from a lot of localities that wish they were in that position because, I'm going to walk through an example of what that means. So let's pick a hypothetical project, Project A. So the top portion of this graph is the CIP and the bottom portion's going to be the operating budget. And each of these text boxes is going to be an action point in time of what takes place and the impact it has on the operating budget. So think about Project A. It's identified, it needs $10 million. So the city or schools appropriate $10 million to that project. That establishes the appropriation authority for the project manager to begin executing. And in this hypothetical situation, the spend on that $10 million occurred $2 million right out of the gate, $5 million the next year, and then $3 million in year three. So then what city finance and, or looking at is the city's cash position and the execution of projects, which is really going to be the driving factor of when the city goes to market. And so in this instance, year three, they look at it and they go, hey, it's time for us, they completed that project, it's time to go sell the bonds for Project A. So then they take it to market and they sell it. So year four, the following year, is when that debt service then hits the operating budget down below. So you can see they're very much interrelated. You can't have one without the other, the CIP and the operating budget, but that's the relationship and example of the relationship as to how that might work. And that expenditure timeline, that's hypothetical. It could be it was a project ready to go and they spent all $10 million right out of the gate. It's still going to be a future point in time likely as to when those bonds are sold and the debt service hits. So how to monitor and plan for the bonds? So one of the things that should always occur is any bonds that are programmed in the CIP should be assumed that they're going to be sold at a future point in time with the, an impact on the operating budget in the form of debt service payment. And again, that's being driven by project execution of when the, when the project's actually completed or done, more than likely. One of the things that both bodies need to be mindful of, and they certainly has been part of the discussion in the past, city and schools both share the same debt metrics. So the rating agencies don't care that the two are separate boards, they don't care that they have separate operating budgets that are then combined into one. What they're looking at is the city's overall health for both city and schools. And so what they're looking at are the self-imposed debt metrics that are listed there. And I promise I won't go into them, you'll probably tired of me talking to you. And then the last one is that whenever the bonds are programmed, the city in the past has always relied on having a sustainable bill player, bill payer in pay, in place or sustainable means of supporting that debt service whenever it comes back over to the operating budget as a result of a project being executed in the CIP. That's certainly something that the rating agencies have always been mindful of, any part of the calls I've been, whenever we talk about having a sustainable, ongoing bill payer in place for a lot of those public facility revenue bonds, they see that as a very positive means of having a sustainable operating budget in that bonds are not going to end up squeezing out governmental services down the road. So with all that being said, I'll be glad to open it up for questions, discussion, comments.
Thank you, and I'll get things rolling. I started off by saying that this was going to be a confrontation with reality, and it is. And there's, you know, we got some good things, but we got our challenges ahead. The good thing says Virginia Beach is a great city. You know, recently we're number one on the East Coast, we're number eight in the country, and that's due to a lot of people in this room. And, you know, you know, we got, we need our good schools, we got to be a safe city. Our parks and rec are second to none. You know, we got it going, but we have challenges. And as you go forward, I think the biggest challenge from our perspective is that we're an aging city, both in terms of infrastructure and the silver tsunami that is upon us that are really going to be some, and you know, I'm speaking as a silver tsunami dude, okay? But once again, you know, the cost of government is going to be going up substantially. I think it was about a week or so Kevin gave us a thing, the cost of projects went up between 2018 and current, 99%. Our $267 million bond referendum, the manager tells me now, to do the same projects is 1.3 billion. And the obligations that we're going to have going forward, you know, with our priorities, the city's priorities, number one, stormwater, number two, public safety, schools, and then attainable housing. And, you know, recently Patrick and I attended the mayor, the governor's, you know, conference on housing. And housing is a crisis, not only in Virginia Beach, but also nationally. And I think one of the things in discussions with current and future council members is, you know, the ratio that we have of commercial to residential taxes is 15 to 85. We got to change that, we got to move that dial. The only way I think that we're going to be able to confront the future is to create significantly new revenue sources. You know, we can't keep on going to the well of the, you know, the residential and commercial taxpayers. You know, they're kind of a little bit at the tipping point because they're feeling the effects of, you know, inflation. But once again, I think as we go forward, and I think this is a great thing, that, you know, the way we're going to survive this together is unity and, you know, cooperation. And, you know, I think a mutual understanding of what we need and, you know, be united, united and a focus going forward, that we're going to build that strong bond that we're going to need to confront the future. Kim?
He told me I was going to have to do this, but not to repeat anything the mayor just said, but we made a conscious effort this year to, to stay in contact. And I think that, that made a, a big difference for the both of us. But when we started this at 12:30, I said, this is one of, one of the things I look forward to every year, and I do. I, I have a renewed spirit and understanding of the fiscal implications that both of us face every day, right? And, but I ask that as we're sitting here, that you remember being right here and that you use this as an opportunity to stay in touch with your counterpart, your school board counterpart. There are some of you that I speak to often, but look at the person next to you and share numbers and try to stay in touch enough that we each have an understanding of what is exactly, what exactly is on our plate. Because really, we don't, and we tend to kind of bicker about that. But this is, this is monumental and I, I appreciate you this past year, I appreciate city council members, and I look forward to meeting the new ones and vice versa for council with the new school board members.
You did pretty good for being on the spot. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else work?
Thank you, Mayor Dar, and just a couple of questions. Kevin, thank you, Kevin, Nikki and Crystal for your presentation. Can you go to slides 32? And the question is, what percent approximately, I will put you on the spot, Kevin and Crystal, does the state and us as a locality and the federal government, what percent is it, is the state larger than us and then the fed, we're larger than the federal government?
You mean in terms of a percentage of makeup of the school's operating budget?
Yes.
The city's contribution to school is what Crystal just says, being larger?
Okay, thank you. Just a comment, Superintendent Robertson, thank you for that commentary on pointing out the differences, in my opinion, of our school system versus those across the state. And I get that loud and clear. Thank you.
Hey, Beth?
So could you go to slide 38, I believe? So one of the things that I'm most proud of, I'm turning my microphone on. Can I just turn it on?
Got a green mic there.
It's got a green button, but I'm not sure. So on slide 38, you see all of these programs that we offer, and we are, as Dr. Robertson said, there's no other school division in the state of Virginia that offers this amount of choices for students as what we do. I'm very proud of this and I hope city council is proud of them as well. Not only are we not, we're one of few, we're the only state that offers this type of choices, but one of the, there's no other school division, I think, on the East Coast that offers this many choices for their students. So one of the things that has worked for us for many years now is the revenue sharing formula. It's a dependable source of income that the school board is working on their budget. We can look at that and say, okay, this is what the revenue sharing formula says. But when it comes to making choices, the city council has to do, you all make choices and decide, and you have in the past, decide to eliminate certain things. And for example, last spring, you cut the real estate.
Tax. Oh, there we go. I'm sorry. Last spring, you taught, you cut the real estate tax. And you know that that drastically reduces the amount of money in the revenue sharing formula that the school division is depending on. So I just ask, if you are as proud of our school division as we are, and you should be, because this is one of the things that makes our city people want to live here because of this, because of the fact that we are one of the number one choices of what we offer students in the whole country, pretty much. So, you know, if you want to attract businesses, you've got to have the best school division. And so I ask that in the future, when you think about cutting taxes, that you hold the school system harmless, that, so, because when we look at the, at the revenue sharing formula, you know, it's, it's a great indication of what we're supposed to be getting or should be getting from city council. But when you make choices to say, cut the real estate tax from 98 to 97 cents on 100, that greatly reduces the amount of money that the school division can depend on. And I also ask city council, and I'm leaving the school board, but I ask people who are staying on city council and on school board to, to be thinking outside the box for ways to raise funding for our CIP, because as you know, we have some aging structures in our city that need to be replaced and it's not cheap. As you know, the cost for building those types of things is, is much higher. And you just pointed out, even on your own, like when you're trying to think about building things for the city, you know, things are really, really high now compared to what they were even five years ago. So the inflation has really taken hold, but we can't ignore it. And I ask you to, when you're talking with your colleagues and your, for, on the legislature, for example, we need the legislature to be able to come up with some ideas to allow city council to rate, do certain taxes. I know that one of the bills last year was, was introduced and passed by our legislature that would have allowed the locality to be able to raise taxes in certain, like when you, when you buy things, they would be able to add taxes to that. And that was supposed to go directly for school funding, or not school funding, but the cost to build structures. So I just ask you to elaborate, elaborate on that with, with legislators when you talk with them and, you know, and be creative. I, I think our city needs to be creative well, as well. But the one thing that I want everybody to, to take away from this and what I had to say is, please look at this and think about what we offer and be proud of the educational system in Virginia Beach. Thanks.
Yes, before I get to Councilmember Schulman, you know, Ms. Anderson, I'd like to correct a misperception. Yes, we did lower the rate, but the prices and assessments on homes went up dramatically. And I just paid my tax bill on Monday and my tax bill went up. And once again, we're dealing with a lot of people in the city that have been confronting inflation with high prices of groceries, gas, and everything, and trying to find that balance. But, you know, to say that I think that we effectively cut taxes, you know, is a misnomer in, in a lot of ways. And, you know, the thing is, people that live in Virginia Beach see their taxes go up every year because of the price. It was brought up during the presentation, that the cost of meeting cost of a house is over $300,000, okay? And, you know, so once again, we try to find that balance, and believe me, we got some criticism, you know, for even, you know, doing that, you know, because a lot of people in this room have told me that their taxes went up significantly. But the thing is, you know, the one thing is, what we really do value schools as part of the equation about what makes us such a great city. And, but once again, we are, you know, just like every city in this great nation, you know, confronting, these conversations are going on in every city hall, you know, throughout this great nation. But we are fortunate that we have the military here, we got a, you know, a lot of predictable revenue streams. And I can tell you, a lot of, some of the big cities are really facing, you know, billions of dollars in, you know, shortfalls. But once again, I think by us communicating and us being here, we're going to, we're going to get it right and we're going to come to a, when, we're going to go with Josh and then Michael.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Chair. Thank you to Ms. Pate and to you, Kevin, and Dr. Robertson for the presentations. And before, I've got one question for schools and then I've got one question for, for you, Kevin. But before I, I go to those, I just want to point a pride there with the level of investment and the amount of return that we get out of the environmental sciences program at the Brock Center in District Nine. And what a wonderful program that is, and I just, it's a, it's an overperformer in terms of how many dollars that are going in it, so. On the question of school construction, I know some of y'all know, on, on school board, I know our council colleagues know that the, the lottery money over the years has, has been rerouted and, and not, I guess, the state hasn't kept its promise in, in terms of the, the school construction funds that, that were promised to, to get the lottery in the first place. So that effort is being made and a request was made of our, our General Assembly and at the Planning District Commission to, to make sure to restore that to a pipeline for school construction. But to that end, and I know when, when schools came to us back, I think it was in March earlier this year, and considering, I think, schools has 87, 86 buildings roughly, and, and a couple of high schools were obviously kind of put on hold and, and, you know, and discussed along with Betty F. and Bayside Sixth. And at that time, I had, I had asked, you know, why, because I identified a CIP relative to the HVAC budget and the annual expenditures there, $30 million a year for, for HVAC over the next, over the next six budget cycles. And, and that's for 86 buildings. For, for us, for on the city side, we have 485 buildings and we've budgeted $2.5 million a year for, for HVAC. And sure, there's a couple of one-offs, you know, CIP projects in the neighborhood of $20 million. But I just, I, I asked then, and I still just can't get my head around why, why schools are spending $30 million a year on HVAC when, you know, if you build new buildings, you put new HVAC in systems and they run more efficiently, why, why that is? And I'm sure there's an explanation for it, but, but I do have that question. And then secondly, Kevin, I was going to ask you about the disabled veteran tax relief. And you, you had said 35, 36 million dollars right now, and then through the end of the forecast period into the 90, 94 million dollar range. Does that include the ballot measure that was just passed recently to further provide exemptions for spouses of, of those killed, I guess, in the line of duty, but not, not by reason of enemy action?
It, it does not, and I should have caveated that. So that initial projection is based on last year's program, the cost of last year's program, assumed growth in FY26, but... assumed growth in FY '26, but the number of individuals that'll now be eligible as a result of the most recent public vote on expanding the program, it does not include that. I won't know or have an indication of what that number looks like or how much more that could contribute to the overall long-term growth of the program.
Well, certainly, certainly worthwhile, and I've, I've got nothing but respect to our service members and their families, so I don't, I don't want it to sound like anything other than that, but a number that strikes me is, I think right now, that's almost four and a half cents on the real estate tax. So it is significant, and it's growing, and I think it's right, and I'm glad you're, you're mindful of it, so thank you.
Kevin, can you clarify, what is that number again? Or the number currently remaining?
So the number currently is about $28 million is the current year amount, and then it's projected to be $35 million in FY '26 next year. And Councilmember, you are correct, with that level of growth, say, the budget was to remain level in terms of real estate growth to real estate growth, those are coming off of the assessment base in that of about close to $7 million a year, which is equivalent close to one cent of the real estate tax rate. So it's almost like to, to ma, remain level with real estate budget to budget, there would need to be an accepted growth, or everybody else would need to pay 1% more just to keep it flush.
Okay, Michael?
Thank you, Mayor. This may have, this may be the sixth joint meeting that I've participated in since I joined the council, and I think it's the first time I've spoken. And I think part of the reason is because often I find the comments here to be performative rather than substantive, and I think we really need to work hard to get to the heart of the matter, and I'm going to try to do that today. I think there's a gap in our communications, and it probably reveals that we should meet more and talk more and collaborate more. I, as everyone else who have communicated here today, is a great admirer of our public school system. I'm a product of the public school system and stay in touch regularly with my teachers and so many friends that I have from those times, and I, and I do feel that the school division has provided me opportunities to be successful in life, and I think you've only gotten better since then, which is good. And as the mayor pointed out, though, we have some realities, some financial realities that we need to work through together, and I don't think we're doing the best job of that. And as an example of it, I'm glad we're still on, on slide 38, and I appreciate the superintendent's comments, but I think they fail to recognize the outstanding community needs that the city could list that are equally arguably even potentially more important, such as our public utilities, clean water. Our roads are coming in more than 100% over budget. People have an expectation for safe roads, clean water, that their sewer lines work when they flush the toilet, take a shower. The neighborhoods that I serve in District Three were impacted by Hurricane Matthew, so I feel a great sense of responsibility to ensure that flood prevention is delivered on schedule, won't be delivered on budget, I'm sorry to say, because of the inflationary pressures that we're experiencing. We have to figure those things out. So when you present a list like this and, and suggest that somehow anyone at this table or in our community, although may, I don't think it was the intent, but the suggestion was made that somehow we may not value these elements because we have real conversations about household affordability and our other city projects, I think it's less than collaborative, because these are also vital community needs. And we, we need to work together in order to ensure that we can deliver all of these things. And as we have hard conversations about the budget, it doesn't mean that we don't value or support the Governor's School for the Arts or the Environmental Studies Program, it does, but we also value clean water and flood prevention in our neighborhoods, and we just got to work together in order to make sure we can deliver all of those things, including an outstanding public education system. I wish we could do, I think, I don't want to be so pessimistic, but we need to do a little bit better job of these things and, and also lean into a trusting relationship a little bit more and understand that while you're tasked with delivering, when I say you, I mean the school board members and also school board officials, you're tasked with delivering high-quality public education, and we're tasked with delivering all those other things that I mentioned and much more, and they're all important. So how can we do that and also alleviate those burdens that households are, families and individuals are experiencing because of our inflationary and economic pressures? I don't have all the answers to that, but we can start by assuming the best from each Mayor, I also have one other comment. On the healthcare, I guess maybe it's just a question, or maybe it's just pointing something out, because one of the, one of the items that came through in the reversion discussion was a $10 million plus up for funding in the healthcare system for the school division. One of the things I'm struggling with as a city council member, taking nothing away from the importance of mitigating the healthcare costs and making sure that everyone who is a public servant has access to excellent healthcare and benefits, but we have a disparity now between the healthcare that's provided for city employees and the healthcare that's provided for school division employees. And I think we owe it to those public servants also to be mindful of their healthcare costs. And I wish we could just, I just, this is just my observation, I wish we could just work a little more closely together so that we could deliver the same benefits that all public servants, I think, deserve to receive excellent benefits, and it's just something to keep in mind. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Barbara?
You forgot me.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, Rosemary, then Barbara.
So I really appreciate Michael's comments, and I'm a former school board member and a former teacher, and I certainly understand how important schools are to our city and to the quality of life that we have here and our, and our economic development. And I just did want to say that one of the things, and, and the mayor kind of alluded to this, when we do economic development projects, we're always looking that they will grow our tax base, because with the increasing costs, we've got to have increasing revenue, and we can't put it all on personal property tax and real estate tax. And you saw we have declining revenues in other areas. So please keep in mind, for example, when we did the Pembroke Square project, and the headline said, oh, they're putting $22 million into a parking garage, well, that's not quite the whole story. The whole story was that parking garage is going to pay for itself, but it's also going to put additional revenue in our coffers to be shared with the schools. So please know that whenever we look at these things, we're looking at our bottom line of how we can grow our revenues so we can pay for all the wonderful things that our citizens have come to deserve and, and they love. I mean, that's, there's a reason we were named the, the best place on the East Coast to live because of our quality of life. So we have to, and it's not just one sliver of the pie, we have lots of slivers of the pie that make sure that we have a quality of life here, and we've got to make sure people are safe, they have to have, make sure their houses are not going to flood, they have to have a good place to send their schools, and all the things that make Virginia Beach a great place, which, as Bobby has always said, is also the people of Virginia Beach. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay, Barbara?
Well, these sessions jointly with the city and the school board are very important, but there's a group that's missing, and that's our state legislators. And I think in the future, when we have these joint meetings, and I think maybe we might want to squeeze one in before January, we really need to have them at the table too, because they are a very important player in all of this, because the General Assembly sets the taxes that the locality can levy. And when we are dependent mostly on real estate tax, that really hits at a major problem we're all looking at, and that is affordable housing. Because if we're going to keep the real estate tax high, that's impacting what people are going to be paying for their housing and their rent and mortgage. So the, the General Assembly is a key component of all of this. I kind of look at the fact that they're figuring out what to do with their surpluses or how they got their surplus. It might be because they just supplanted their, their portion of the education funding with lottery money, when I think everybody expected it to be additional funding to schools. So I hope we're going to start including our General Assembly with these meetings, and I, I hope we can have another, I know we didn't have the reception we had planned because they weren't available, but they're a key part of this. And looking at this exemption now, we're going to have to accommodate, that's climbing so much with the veterans, and that's a wonderful benefit to them, but it, it comes out of our revenues. And so we really need to be in touch with those folks a lot more, and I, I think we need to do it now.
Yeah, and thank you, Barbara. Not yet, let me put it this way, a number of years ago, I sat on an unfunded mandate task force, you know, at the government level, you know, with folks who are all over, and I think, I forget, it was a large percentage of our budget deals with unfunded mandates, but what was really striking to me was the number of unfunded mandates the school systems have to take in account.
True.
You know, in terms of accountability for accountability measures. I mean, it was, you know, crazy. And, but I think, once again, I think as we get ready to adjourn, you know, to thank everybody, but I think, once again, when we take a look at Virginia Beach and to take our size geographically, 460,000 people here, you know, there's, it takes a lot of, I always describe it as kind of a Swiss watch where one wheel kind of designs another so you can keep perfect time. And then when certain wheels don't work or gears inside, you know, you get dysfunction. But I really think that we have the ability to create something very, very good here, you know, going forward. You know, basically, there's two types of, you know, criticism builds bridges, but there's constructive criticism and destructive. And as long as we stay constructive and that we're working toward the same goals and building those bridges going forward, you know, I agree, you know, with Barbara, we got to get the legislators on board because they're a very much a, a major gear in all of our systems. You know, and when you think about interrelated things, you know, we're dealing with homeless populations, and guess what? The school has 900 homeless kids in it right now. So what we do affects each other. So I think going forward, let's be positive, let's build those bridges, and, you know, and together we will be successful even during the most challenging time. Unless somebody else got something, let's go ahead and adjourn, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. That was Richard.